Hey everybody, welcome back. Session sixteen of our look at the book of Revelation in your Bible. We're taking twenty looks, twenty sessions for 2020 vision in the year of 2020. And so I want to welcome you and thank you for taking a look and in-depth look into the word of God. We're on chapter sixteen. And if you've missed any of our previous sessions, we're on session sixteen, I apologize. We're in chapter eighteen. But if you've missed any of our first fifteen sessions, you can find them all on Whitestone Church TX YouTube channel. Whitestonechurchtx.com. We have notes from every night. So if you'd like to receive our notes, we can get, we have a different set of notes for every night. Go to our website whitestonechurchtx.com, go to the contact us, drop down menu, give us your information. We'll send those to you email quickly. We have a large mailing list that's growing. And we won't, we won't send you any unsolicited stuff, just what you ask for. And, and so we, I want to say thank you so much for being here. We're going to dive in tonight. We're in chapter eighteen. We're on the beast system, the city named Babylon. We ended at our session fifteen with the great harlot, the prostitute, the, the, the religion, the religious false prophet that spreads a false religion around the world. And now we're going to look at the, at the city of Babylon. And so we've got a lot of territory to cover. So let's pray. We'll get started. Grab your Bible, grab your pen or, and grab some paper. Grab your notes, grab whatever you gotta get, get, get your, your typewriter, your typewriter. Get your key, your keyboard going and start typing. If you got a typewriter, use it, man, whatever you got, do it. So let's pray, Father God, we love you. And God, we give to you this time, and we ask that you would open up our eyes, God. That God, you would give us clarity of vision in the year of 2020, God. We want, we want to see clearly. God, open up our ears where we're deaf, open up our eyes where we're blind, God. Open up our mouth where we're dumb or where we don't want to be bold. And so God, I pray for boldness. I pray for discernment. I pray for wisdom. I thank you for all of my brothers and sisters who are watching this. And God, I pray that each of us would take our battle position, that we would be watchmen on the wall. That Father God, that we would sound the trumpet at the coming of the king. We would sound the trumpet at the coming of danger. God, that we would be a voice in the desert, that we would cry out for you on your behalf. So Father, bless this time. God, bless the nation of Israel, God. Prepare our brothers and sisters. God, prepare us for what it is that you want us to do. In the mighty name of Jesus, and everybody said, amen. Let's recap. On your notes, I just have listed the twenty-two chapters of the book of Revelation. The book of Revelation in chapter one, the book is written about Jesus Christ. It's the revelation of Jesus. If something needs, if something's hidden or it's not clear, it needs to be revealed to us. We go to the doctor. If we feel like we've broken something, he takes an X-ray to reveal what's broken. We already know something's there, but that X-ray would see through that which we can't see through and reveal something we can't see. So even as Jesus created the world, as God created the world in Genesis one, it was a rev and bo car. He would bring out of chaos, out of darkness into light. And so as we know, the, the, the God of this universe is revealing Jesus Christ. The book of Revelation will reveal the Antichrist and the one world government, one world religion, things of that nature. But, but if that's what we're reading it for, we'll miss it. So we gotta read this book first to see Jesus Christ. And then if you'll look on your notes, Jesus reveals to us. So in chapters two and three, Jesus is revealing the condition of the church. He's challenging the church. He's correcting the church. He's rewarding the church. And so that church in chapters two and three, it's all about you and I, it's our heart. Don't look at somebody else and say, oh, they, they, they're not following with Jesus. Look at your own heart. Chapters two and three of the book of Revelation are the most important chapters. You cannot read them enough. You cannot study them enough. If you, if everything else is too much for you, just read the first three chapters. The most important. Without that base, that foundation, we, it's impossible for us to grasp the rest of the book. Revelations four and five, the chapters four and five is revealing heaven, glory, Jesus himself. Chapter six is revealing the seals, the scroll that had the seals, the time periods of judgment. Chapter seven reveals the Jews, the hundred and forty-four thousand, the saints, reveals heavenly worship. Chapters eight revealed the trumpets or the announcements, a trumpet, a horn. You know, if you're driving, you honk your horn to announce that you're there, to announce your arrival. Or like me, to honk your horn and say, hurry up, honey. Okay, I don't do that, not anymore. I did that once, it didn't work out so well. Chapter nine, revealing demonic activity. Chapters eleven, ten and eleven, Jesus is revealing heaven. He's revealing the two witnesses. He's revealing the beginning of this seven-year tribulation. Chapters twelve, Jesus is revealing the woman, the dragon, the child, the war in heaven. Thirteen, he's revealing the beast system, the Antichrist, the false prophet. We'll, we'll, we'll clarify a little, some of those in just a minute. Chapter fourteen, Jesus is revealing the proclamation of heaven and the reaping of the earth. Chapter fifteen, Jesus is revealing the scene in heaven and from God's throne prior to the judgment or the bowls of wrath. Chapter sixteen, Jesus is revealing the seven bowls of wrath. Chapter seventeen, Jesus reveals the harlot. We talked about that last time. Chapter eighteen, where we'll be tonight, Jesus reveals the beast system, Babylon, the city, the great city, the Bible calls it. Chapter nineteen, Jesus will reveal himself returning on a white horse in the Battle of Armageddon. Twenty, it's revealing his millennial reign, the destruction of Satan and the Whitestone, the white throne judgment. Chapters twenty-one and twenty-two, Jesus is revealing heaven. So I said all that real fast, it's in your notes. It's about Jesus being revealed and then Jesus reveals to us. So we have to first see Jesus. Seek ye first the kingdom. Seek first God, and then he'll show you. I talked to people and people are like, ah, I just wish God would open up my eyes to see demons and to see the spiritual world. That's never going to happen if you don't first see Jesus. You want Jesus to open your eyes to see him, to see his glory, not to see the darkness of the enemy. There's no revelation there. That's dead. You want to see the alive revelation of Jesus. And when we know Jesus, it's easy to see the counterfeit. When we know Jesus' voice, it's, it's easy to know what's not his voice. Can I get an amen? So let's re, recap just a little bit. I'm going to bring out some really cool stuff because the more we study Revelation, it's like, oh my God, I learned something new every day. The river Euphrates, which is mentioned in chapters nine and sixteen. The river use, the river Euphrates is not just a physical river. Look at Genesis, all the way back in your Bible, look at Genesis, chapter two. And in the garden of Eden, let me just read this. Now the river went out of Eden. A river out of Eden to water the garden. And from there it parted and became four river heads. So in Genesis, it talks about this river that flows out of Eden, and then it splits off into four different river heads, and it was designed to, to water the garden Eden. This is a physical territory on earth. Now, out of the first river was the river Feshan. The second river was Gihon. The third river is Hiddekel. And the fourth river is the river Euphrates. Now those first three, we've never heard of in our, our modern, you know, identification of rivers. But we know where the river Euphrates is. The river Euphrates is mentioned twice in Revelation. Once in chapter nine, where there's four angels that are bound in it, and they come out and kill. They come out to destroy. So we know those four angels are not heavenly holy angels. These are fallen angels who are bound in the river. Now I don't mean underneath the water, three feet deep, don't let your kids swim in that river. There's fallen angels in it. But there's a spiritual territory, there's a river. The river Euphrates was the boundary of the promised land. It's the biblical boundary of Israel today. Even though Israel's territory doesn't, in man's eyes, go to that river today, that is the spiritual boundary. So I just want to bring that up. The river Euphrates is a spiritual boundary that is bordered, that is the border of the biblical territory of the promised land. It's mentioned again in chapter sixteen of Revelation. Write that down, do your own study. But know this, that remember, the book of Revelation is showing us which was, which is, and which will be. The river Euphrates has been here since creation. It is here today, and it will be dried up physically for the two million man army, the demon army mentioned in Revelation nine, to cross over to invade Israel. So when that Battle of Armageddon takes place, there will be a supernatural lowering of the boundary that protects Israel today. It's deep stuff. Do your own study, but just let me summarize it like this. Euphrates River has end time great strategy from a war standpoint. And spiritually, it is a boundary that is protecting Israel today. But that boundary will be lowered. That should alarm us. That should get our attention. Just to recap, all occultic religions are traced back to the power, to the Tower of Babel. We're going to talk about the city of Babylon. The Tower of Babel is where the city of Babylon, chaos and confusion to Babel, blah, 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 blah. Chaos and confusion, that's the root word. We'll talk about that. This, all occult religions that we talked about in, in session fifteen, originated from Nimrod and the Tower of Babel. Babylon, Antichrist, False Prophet. Babylon, Antichrist, False Prophet. Those are different. Two of them are people, one's a city. So we'll talk about that. Let's differentiate between Babylon, the city, the Antichrist, and the False Prophet. Nimrod was the first world dictator. He is a man filled with Satan who rebelled and war, went to war against God. And he hunted man. So when we, well, we're going to look at Babylon for a quick second, and then Nimrod for a second. Babylon will be an end time city with physical boundaries, physical territory, that the Antichrist will establish his kingdom out of. Babylon is likened to Babel in the Old Testament. The Antichrist is likened to Nimrod. Now Nimrod was a man filled with Satan. The Antichrist will be a man filled with Satan. Nimrod was the first world dictator. The Antichrist will be the last world dictator. Nimrod rebelled and went to war against God. The Antichrist will convince the physical humans on this planet to go to war against God. I know it sounds crazy, but let's get there in our minds. Nimrod also was famous for hunting down men. He wasn't just a hunter of deer or antelope or big game lions, tigers, and bears. He hunted men. The world leader, the Antichrist, will hunt down men. There's a, there's a commonality there. End time city Babylon equals Babel. The end time Antichrist equals Nimrod the second. So when we think of Nimrod, think of the next world, the last world dictator. When you think of Babel, think of Babylon. The satanic duet is the False Prophet and the Antichrist world leader. False Prophet will be one man. The Antichrist will be another man. They'll both be filled with Satan. One will be a governmental ruler, one will be a religious ruler. They'll work in tandem. They're singing a duet until the dictator, the one world dictator turns and kills them or kills that, that harlot. We talked about that. The prostitute of Revelation seventeen, listen to this. The prostitute of Revelation seventeen is not the beast, but rides the beast. So this False Prophet will steer and dominate and control the beast as a rider would control a horse or another type of animal they're riding on. At some point, the beast will get irritated and not want to be controlled and will turn on the False Prophet. What that means is that the Antichrist will be okay with everybody worshiping whatever God they want for a while. But at that three and a half year tribulation, the abomination of desolation, he'll destroy the idea that you can worship whoever you want. And he's going to want all the worship for himself. So he will not, no longer see that as someone to usher in the worship of Satan, the dragon. He'll now see it as competition. So just understand that, that Satan, there's no deals with Satan. There's no kindness in his kingdom. So when he's done using you, he throws you away. And that's what the False Prophet will find himself in. False religious, religious systems have been identified with Rome until now. Don't have, I don't want to spend a lot of time going through this. When Rome in three hundred AD, when Constantine supposedly gave his life to God and became a Christian, all of Rome turned to Christianity. But they kept the pagan traditions and rituals. Those pagan traditions and rituals merged with Christianity. This is part of that false beast system. So we talked a lot about the False Prophet, this, this, this harlot. A harlotry merges what's holy with what's unholy. A prostitute flatters, but then is hollow and shallow on the inside. So when it says that Christianity merged with Roman Catholicism, or Roman paganism, I should say, we find things like Christmas, we celebrate that as Christians, as the birth of Jesus. But that's not the original purpose. The original purpose, Jesus wasn't born December twenty-fifth in the winter. He was born probably in the summer, because Mary and Joseph had to travel. There was a census. There's a lot of, you know, reasoning why it wasn't winter time. There was limited travel during that time, et cetera, et cetera. But, but when we merged with Rome, Christianity didn't have church buildings. They met in houses, then they were moved into buildings. Christmas was the, what we would call Christmas was the Roman holiday to worship Baal or the Mars or the, the God, the, the God of Mars, if you will. And so a lot of things like the Christmas tree and, and these things were the merging of Christianity with paganism. Now I'm not saying it's wrong to, to observe Christmas. I'm just saying, we got to understand where the roots came from, and that's that merging. The same with Easter. If you ever, Easter is the worship of the fertility god, Ishtar. And if you ever think about it, rabbits laying eggs. Well, rabbits are known for their great ability to, to reproduce quickly. So like a bunch, you know, a bunch of rabbits, very fertile. The egg there is, is to worship this other false pagan deity. So we see a lot of things. Instead of worshiping the Passover, we worship Easter. Well, we should be worshiping the Passover. So I want us to just really see that there's this merger. And I'm not saying it's wrong to practice these, or to observe these traditions or these holidays, but we got to know where the root is, so that we don't succumb to the deception of this false system. So let's jump into chapter eighteen, the fall of Babylon the Great. Let me say this, Babylon is a city. Now, think about the cities of the world that have great influence. When you think of New York City, you have a different idea than you, when you, when you think of Hong Kong or you think of LA. You have a very complete different idea when you think of Las Vegas. So when you think of a city, a city has the ability to influence the world. The Antichrist will arise up out of the beast system. We've said that a lot. This mindset, the morals of the Antichrist are already being, the foundation's already being laid. The value of life, the Antichrist loves the idea of taking life. He has no respect for life. So that, that, that foundation is already being laid through euthanasia, abortion, the murders that our kids are exposed to on television, video games. Life is just treated very flippantly. You know, third world countries, we don't get all bent out of shape when we hear, you know, five thousand of them were ravaged by disease. We're like, oh yeah, sorry, poor guys over there. But sure glad I'm safe. You know, we, we, we have this, we have an Antichrist value of life. We have an Antichrist value of sex. We don't honor sex. We don't have biblical sex as the mandate, as we should. We don't honor, we have the, the, the beast system mindset already of finance and money and greed and power and what's right. And you know, it's not personal, it's just business. So in our business world, we act one way, but then we worship God a different way on Sunday. And, and we, we, you know, we see that the Antichrist system is already here. So this city, when it talks about Babylon, just like Babel, the Antichrist will sit on a real throne in this city. This will be his headquarters. This will be the most corrupt city the world has ever seen. But it will be the most prosperous city the world has ever seen. It will be the most influential city. It will be the place that every governmental leader on the planet will want to have their office there, their embassy, their headquarters, every big business, every corporation, every manufacturing. Everybody will want to be in this physical city. This physical city will be the seat or the throne of the Antichrist himself. The False Prophet will probably sit in the same city. There could be two different locations. But this will be the world's biggest power ever seen. And out of this city, this city will sit ten leaders who will control the nations. And the Antichrist will sit at the top and rule the world from this city. So when we think about Las Vegas, we all laugh and joke, you know, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. Well, that has changed the idea in our mind. That little slogan of, of advertising campaign slogan has stuck in our mind saying, oh yeah, if you go to Vegas and you can drink all you want, you can sleep around all you want, you can bang anything you want. Sin city. Yeah, yeah, cha-ching. And it influences the world on what's acceptable, what's valued, what are, what's ethical, what's moral. And so some of us have found ourselves, when we get in that city, we lose our minds. We just lose our mind. And I mean, we do things that we never, and, and we realize that that city influenced us. That is just a microcosm of the influence of this city of Babylon will have. So as we see the destruction of the harlot, I want you to look at chapter seventeen before chapter eighteen. The harlot represents the False Prophet, the beast of religion. God always, always judges his house first. He always judges the believer. The, he always says, look inward before you look outward. So now we're looking outward. The fall of Babylon the Great. After these things, verse one, chapter eighteen. "I saw another angel coming down out of heaven, having a great authority, and the earth was illuminated by his glory." I love these angels, man. Just, just look at, I mean, this, this angel illuminates the earth? That's awesome. "And he cried mightily with a loud voice, saying, Babylon the Great has fallen, is fallen, and has become a dwelling place of demons, a prison for every foul spirit, a cage for every unclean and hated bird." Very interesting language there. "For all the nations have drunk of the wine of the wrath of her fornication." All the nations are mesmerized by this city, Babylon. And they're drunk on the fornication, on the, on the, the cheating against God that this city does. The kings of the earth, write this down, the kings, we're going to see a classification of two different people. "The kings of the earth have committed fornication with her, and the merchants of the earth have become rich through the abundance of her luxury." Now let's just get practical. When you read Revelation, I really want you to figure out, well, how's this really going to take place? Listen. Prior to this happening, we had six, seven seals on the scroll and seven trumpets. In some of those trumpets, a third of the population's destroyed. Another one, a fourth of the population's destroyed. A third of the trees are destroyed. I mean, great havoc. Let me just ask you a question. If a third of the people in your city that you lived in now were suddenly killed by a pandemic, by hailstones from heaven, by, you know, intense heat, whatever, whatever it means, what would happen to their cars and their houses and their clothes and their jewelry? If a third of the houses became vacant in every city across the world? And you lived in a low-income house? And you know that, hey, that million-dollar mansion across town is vacant? And all their money and their car keys are still in their Tesla and all their jewelry's still in their drawers? Listen, everybody that's alive at this point will be extremely prosperous. And the Antichrist ruler, the governor of the world, the dictator, he will ensure that there's great prosperity. He'll answer all of your financial needs, all of your medical. I mean, he'll send you money. He's going to give you free education. Everything you have will be tied to this guy, and the world will love him for it. He'll bring peace. He'll stop wars. He'll bring treaties between the Muslim and the Jew. He, he will, everybody will love this system, this city, this beast empire. "The merchants of the earth have become rich through the abundance of her luxury." The beast system will make everyone rich with the exception of those who are slaves in this system. So we'll see the sinister side in just a minute. But on this side, on the face, everybody's prosperous. But there will be a great dichotomy between those who have and those who have not. This is a demonic territory. Physical territory is very important in the supernatural. This city is a demonic territory. It's not coincidental. We talked about the woman in the basket in Zechariah, the plains of Shinar. Babel was built in the plains of Shinar. This city will probably be built in that same area. Territory is extremely vital to Satan. I could talk about this for a day. But just think about groupings of sexual perverted strip clubs or adult pornographic bookstores. They're grouped. You always see them grouped in certain parts of town. You'll always see them at the edge of town or over, or you'll see a grouping of bars. There'll be, you know, this territory, this four-block area is full of bars and full of, this territory is just given over. Listen, that's demonic territory. God strategically plants churches, missionaries, preachers in certain territories. It's not just, oh, we got a good deal on twenty anchors over here. Yeah, thank you, Jesus. No, no, no. He strategically needs us to go and invade a territory. If you've never read The Cross and the Switchblade, read it about David Wilkerson. He took a preacher from the country and planted him in a strategic territory in the gangs in New York City, and he changed a culture. So when God calls you to the middle of darkness, don't be surprised. He needs light there. And the gates of hell cannot stand against the church. So when you drive by a strip club, shut it down in the supernatural. In the name of Jesus, I pray it goes bankrupt. In the name of Jesus, I pray every woman dancing gets saved right now. And I pray that every guy gets sick in his stomach and leaves, and his wife catches him. I mean, I just start praying against those places. I pray for infestations. I pray for all sorts of stuff. But I always pray against that territory. I pray God send a believer to buy that place. Some of you listening, you got enough money to go buy that territory. Go buy it, burn the bulldoze down the building, and put something there that honors God. Territory is important. I could talk about it way too much. The hated bird, the hated birds or the unclean birds, these are demons. This Babylon city will harbor demons. Demons are disembodied spirits looking for somebody to inhabit. So, so let me say this. This is why I believe fallen angels and demons are different. Fallen angelic beings who still have angel bodies and angel capabilities. And, and their, their, their bodies are what they had in heaven. Now, when they fell from heaven, Their bodies became sinful and they are breaking down and they are grotesque. Um, dark fallen angels. Demons are different. Demons in the Bible are always likened to pests, pestilence. Birds, scorpions, snakes, flies, Beelzebub is the lord of the flies, um, all sorts of terminology there. Demons are disembodied. They're always looking for a body to inhabit. That's why when Jesus casts out. Two thousand demons out of the demoniac at the tomb. He says, what is your name? He's talking to them. They have rank, they have identity, they have a order. So one, the, the, the Colonel or the whoever the head guy says, our name is Legion, my name is Legion, we are Legion. Well, he spoke on behalf of one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine other demons. And they said, is, is our time come for you to torment us? In other words, are we gonna go to the bottomless pit? So, so fallen angels are bound right now. Demons are, are. Uh, and I probably shouldn't say fallen angels are bound right now. I, I do believe they still are working their, their, um, their evil. But what I'm getting at is just look into that because the demons go from the guy to a pig. Listen, I wanna say this, um, when demons leave, they look for another place. I have seen demons jump from one person to another person. I've seen demons jump or inhabit bodies at funerals or, or when somebody dies and they have this. And, and it generationally goes to, to somebody else in that family. Listen. Demons are to be cast out in the name of Jesus. We're not afraid of them, but we are also not ignorant of them. So when it says that this city has every hated, unclean, foul bird, that is a reference to demon or demonic. Spirits. Um, we'll talk about that at another time. Babylon is never used of the beast or the heads of the, of the beast. Babylon is a system, a city, or a way of life. The Antichrist. Um, the false prophet, the Antichrist, false prophet and dragon are separate from Babylon. So you have the Antichrist, the false prophet, the dragon, the dragon is Satan, the Antichrist is the world dictator. The false prophet is this propagator of false religion, harlotry. Babylon is the city. So the four work in tandem or work together, but they're very different in their function and their role. Listen to verse four. I heard another voice from heaven saying, come out of her. And read it for yourself in your Bible. Look at, look at verse four. Come out of her, come out of what? Come out of Babylon. Come out of Babylon, my people. God is saying, what did my people have to do in Babylon? Come out. Come out of her, my people, lest you share in her sin and lest you receive her plagues. Listen, Babylon has existed. It does exist and it will exist. Now listen, today God's saying, come out of Babylon. Come out of chaos, come out of confusion. Come out of the value system of Satan, come out of the moral system of Satan, come out of the, the financial system of Satan, come out of the pride of Satan. The arrogance, the bitterness, the hatred, the sexual perversion, come out of that system. My people don't belong there. And if you don't come out of that, you're gonna share in her sins and receive her plagues. Now listen, take this passage, that one verse and go back and read the seven churches. Go back and read the compromising church, the corrupt church, the lackadaisical church, the dead church. Go look at Pergamum and Thyretara. Thyretara is another name for Samyrus, who is the, the wife of Nimrod. It's, it's the queen, it's a Jezebel spirit. Um, look at the, the church of Laodicea, which is lukewarm. Go read about the churches. They don't repent. They, you know, God says repent, repent, repent. Turn from your wicked way. This is a look at our hearts today. So don't read this passage and you go, oh, all those great sinners, wait on, oh man, all those sinners in ten years, man, they're gonna love Babylon. And they're gonna love the devil's city and they're gonna, they're gonna think there's nothing wrong with the devil's city. There's nothing wrong with the devil's concerts. The devil's movies, the devil's business, the devil's way of religion, and all those stupid idiots. No, no, no. It's here today. And we've got to grasp that. This commerce, this economic system's already here. This city's already here. It's already being built. Whether the physical building that the Antichrist will reign and rule out of is physically built today, I don't know. It probably is. But the foundation on which it will be built is already here. Okay, so you gotta read those in your notes. Verse five. For her sins, whose sins? The sins of this city have reached heaven and God has remembered her iniquities. He's gonna render to her just as she rendered to you and repair her double according to her works. God's not messing around. It is a good thing God does not pay us back for what we do. By the blood of Jesus, you do not get what you deserve. Can I get it? Amen. If we got what we deserved. We deserve hell. We deserve great punishment. Now this city, there's no recourse. God shows no mercy on this city. But he shows mercy on us if we're in Christ Jesus. Um, look down to verse seven. This city says, I am a queen. That's a Jezebel spirit. She called herself Queen of Heaven. Wow, that sounds familiar from one of our major religions in the world. She says, I am no widow. Well, who is likened to a widow? Israel. So this is a city against Israel and I see no sorrow. Therefore, her plagues will come in one day. It's amazing how God will destroy this city. Verse eight, her plagues will come in one day, death and mourning and famine. Wow, fast, one day. And she will be utterly burned with fire, for strong is the Lord who judges her. Verse nine, the kings of the earth. Who committed fornication and lived luxuriously with her will weep and lament. When they see the smoke of her burning, standing at a distance. For the fear of her torment, saying, alas, alas, the great city of Babylon, that mighty city, for in one hour your judgment has come. Now listen, God's gonna destroy this city very fast, very quickly without warning. The kings of the earth who committed fornic-, listen, the kings will want to partner. With what's happening in this city. And what's happening in this city is the Antichrist agenda, the beast system. The political kings, politicians, governmental officials. This will be a, a, a great tragedy to them because all of their power, all of their hope has been invested in this city. But notice they stand at a distance and watch it's burning. Now I'll throw this out. I don't know that this is biblical. You haven't heard me go into a lot of statements like this. But this could be like a nuclear war. This could be a bomb that brings destruction. The question is, who would, who would fire at this city? Could it be Israel? Because what we'll see after this is the world invade Israel. So could this city, which this city will be plotting on the surface and underneath to destroy Israel? Could Israel take a preemptive strike and destroy on God's behalf? Is this going to be a hailstone from heaven? So we'll read how it's destroyed. So I probably should have backed up. It's, it's not necessarily Israel nuking it, but something's going to destroy this city. And people will watch from afar back. But the retaliation will be against God and God's people. The merchants of the earth, verse eleven. So we have kings of the earth, then the merchants of the earth will weep and mourn over her. For no one buys their merchandise. It lists twenty-eight different things of trade. I'll just list some of them. Gold, silver, wood, bronze, marble, frankincense, oil. Cinnamon, flour, wheat, cattle. Look in your Bible to the last of verse thirteen. The merchants of the earth. Amazon. Yeah, Microsoft, Dell, Ross, Target, Walmart, the merchants of the earth. Will all headquarter in this place. This will be the, the location to be established. They will mourn over her, for no one buys their merchandise anymore. So their economic loss will be devastating. The kings will be devastated by the political and the, the governmental loss. But look at what they're trading. There's twenty-eight items. Bronze, iron, marble, oil, frankincense, flour, wheat, chariots, and bodies. And souls of men. Bodies? Yeah, bodies are sold right now. Through human trafficking, sex slavery, forced prostitution, forced labor. And slavery. And the souls of men will be sold. This isn't just commerce. This is beast, Antichrist, demonic commerce. And people will be sad. Listen, I wanna say something direct. What is your money invested in today? What do you invest your money in? What's, what's being traded and sold? Are we investing in pornography? Are we investing in the abortion industry? Where's our money going when we just blindly send it off? What do we, would we be devastated? Would we be devastated to find out that some of our economic success? Is on the back of something God would say unholy. I'm just saying, people of the earth, the merchants will weep. Business, international trade, economic destruction worldwide. In Rome, it's reported that one-third of Rome's population were slaves. I would suspect that a large population of this people, similar to like when you go on a cruise. Or to a country and you're wined and, and, and dined and everybody's serving you. Do we really know what they're making? Do we really know what their condition is? Do we really care? Or is it all about, that's this beast system. It's here. It's gonna get worse. Um, the soul, your soul is your mind, will and emotion. Your soul is your mind, will and emotion. The merchants of these things will become rich by her. And they'll stand at a distance for fear of her torment. Alas, alas, the great city was clothed in fine linen, purple scarlet. And in one hour, such great riches came to nothing. Look down to verse nineteen. They throw dust on their heads, they cry out, they weep, they wail. Alas, alas, the great city in which all of our ships of the sea became rich by her wealth, for in one hour she's made desolate. The Antichrist system will bring great prosperity like the world has never seen. That is one reason it will be very difficult to deny the mark of the beast. The beast system will make it very easy to tap into luxuries of this world. And that is why a lot of people will receive the mark of the beast. They're not, remember the, the mark, the name and the number or the, you know. They're not gonna love the beast, they're gonna love their money. And they're gonna go to hell for it. They're gonna miss God for it. It's a warning to us. Cameron, this is a question I'm asking myself. Do I already sell my morals, my ethics? And my religious convictions for economic gain? And the answer is yes. So God's been revealing to me areas where I'm already bowing down to my morals. My ethics and my religious convictions to make more money. So God is saying, if I do it today, why do I think I won't do it tomorrow? Unless I repent today and change today. It's getting heavy, sorry. Verse twenty-one. Um, a mighty angel took a stone like a great millstone and threw it into the sea. Saying thus with violence, the great city Babylon shall be thrown down and shall not be found anymore. Verse twenty-four, and in her was found the blood of the prophets and the saints and all who were slain on the earth. In the cities found the blood of the prophets, those who speak out. And the blood of the saints, those who love God. You can keep reading it for yourself. Go to this with me. I want us to go to Matthew chapter twenty-five. And, and this is how I wanna end tonight's session. Matthew chapters twenty-four and twenty-five, when you're reading Revelation, you need to read these two chapters. Jesus is talking to his best friends. Now what we've just learned in chapter seventeen and eighteen of Revelation is we just saw the judgment of the harlot. And we saw the judgment of this city. Now what we'll see next time is the judgment of the Antichrist and the false prophet. And then ultimately we'll see the judgment of Satan himself. God is going to judge and bring righteous judgment. Now, what I am tasked to continually share. Is I'm a spokesperson to the church. I'm not the world's greatest evangelist standing on the street corner preaching to people walking by. I can do that. But God's called me to wake the church up. He's called me to shake believers, to never allow us to be settled with where we're at. He's calling, he's pushing us. Now, when we read Revelation, we have to read Matthew twenty-four and twenty-five. Jesus is talking to his best friends. So turn with me to Matthew chapter twenty-five, verse one. His best friends say, hey, Jesus, when you gonna come back? Can I go with you? We're gonna be, you know, tell us all this stuff. So in chapter twenty-five, he starts with the parable of the wise and foolish virgins. And I like to say this, if you don't wanna read your Bible now, why would you wanna read it in heaven? If you don't wanna, uh, um, pray to God today, why would you wanna talk to him in heaven? If you don't want to love God and love his principles and his morals and his judge, his commandments today. Why would you change all of a sudden and love him in heaven? Our soul is our mind, will and emotion. So the way that I think now. Is going to frame how I think in heaven. What I love now, if I let things rule me, what my emotion and my will is now, why would it change? Now, that may say, sound harsh, but we really have this ideology or this theology. That's not necessarily always accurate. Listen to what chapter twenty-five says, the first fourteen verses. Jesus has this parable of the wise and foolish virgins. Now I wanna ask you a question. Jesus says, some are wise, some are foolish. Which one are you? Which one am I? We've got to ask ourselves that question. And before we just flippantly say, oh yeah, I'm the wise one, duh, I go to church, man, yeah, I love God. Let's just really say, okay, God, would you tell me which one I am? Listen to this parable. Cause God, Jesus throws this out in response to, when are you coming back? So this isn't like tucked away at the beginning of his ministry. This isn't something. This is the last week of his ministry. He's gonna go to the cross in a couple, couple days. It's like one of the last things he says. And, and this isn't out of, out of order. This is for you and I today. In twenty twenty. Then the kingdom of heaven shall be likened to ti- to ten virgins who took their lamps. And went out to meet the bridegroom. The bridegroom is Jesus. Now five of them were wise and five were foolish. Those who were foolish took their lamps and took no oil with them. But the wise took oil in their vessels with their lamps. But while the bridegroom was delayed, they all, say all, the wise and the foolish, they got sleepy. They got tired and they went to sleep. And at midnight, a cry was heard. Behold, the bridegroom is coming. Go out and meet him. So all those virgins, whoa, who were asleep, trimmed their wicks, their lamps. So all those virgins, whoa, who were asleep, trimmed their wicks, their lamps. And the foolish said to the wise, give us some oil, our lamps are going out. But the wise said, no, lest we also run out and there not be enough for us and you. Rather you go buy and sell for yourselves. And while the five foolish went out to buy, the bridegroom came. And those who were ready went in with him to the wedding and the door was shut. That is not a popular statement, that's not theology of twenty twenty in the days where everybody goes to heaven. But your Bible says, and the door was shut. And it doesn't only just say that, it says, then the other virgins came up. Lord, Lord, open up to us. But he answered and said, surely, I say to you, I don't know you. Watch, Cameron. Watch, White Stone Church. For you know neither the day nor the hour in which the son of man is coming. Now, Jesus makes this statement and it's not the most popular parable out there. The question is, are we ready for his return? It's not when the rapture will take place. It's, I I'm sorry, it's not if the rapture will take place. There's a rapture coming. The Bible would call it in Greek, the harpazo. Let me, let me educate us on this just a little bit. Chuck Missler does a great job on edu- educating us on the Jewish wedding. In Jewish culture, which Jesus was Jewish, he's talking to Jews. He's talking about a wedding. In Jewish culture, a man would see a girl. A young lady, he'd he'd make his move and he'd, you know, pull out all of his charm and his wit and say, would you marry me? And she would say, yes, just like Joseph did to Mary. And in culture, the Jewish male would then leave and go to his parents' house. Or his parents' property, depending upon how rich they were. And he would either make an addition to the house. Or build his own house on his parents' property. And it could take up to a year. And he would come back with his friends and surprise his bride. When the house was finished or the room was finished. And surprise her and take her to the wedding and they would have like a week-long party. They would have a wedding and then they would consummate the marriage. The honeymoon would be in the addition that he built. So they didn't like go to the beach or go to the hotel. They went to the place where he built for her. We're the bride. Jesus says, I go to prepare a place for you. If it were not so, I would have told you, I go to build a mansion. The bride, you and I, her job was to always be prepared. She didn't know when he would come back for her. The fact that he comes at midnight with this cry is a fact that he wanted to surprise her. See, her job was to always be ready. She need to make herself ready. These five foolish virgins had lamps. But they didn't have oil. Oil represents the Holy Spirit. A lot of us have a lamp. Of religion. A lamp of church attendance. We've got a lamp that we look Christian. But on the inside, we've been foolish. I l- I went and just defined the word foolish. Foolish would mean a person that does not fear. Or respect God. See, if if I'm just watching TV. And I know I pick on TV a bunch, but it's a struggle for me. If I'm just watching TV and all of a sudden, uh, a show comes on and it's risque and there's a bunch of. F-bombs in it and it, but it's an Academy Award winner, everybody else is watching it. Um, I'm being foolish, cause I don't fear God. I don't respect God at that moment. So for that two hours, I'm not fearing God, not respecting God. Not fear in, I'm afraid of him, he's gonna hit me, but respecting his law. Respecting what he calls holy. Well, look, man, I'm just gonna go to the party Friday night, we're gonna, man, we're gonna get hammered, man, we're gonna sleep around, we're gonna do whatever, yeah. Well, I'm not fearing God for those four, five, six hours of fun. If if I'm texting some girl that, some hottie mama that's not my wife, I'm not fearing God's law. And judgment about honoring the wife of my youth. About about his law. His holiness. So these foolish virgins. And they missed the wedding. This study in Revelation is to wake us up. This is not just gonna happen one day. The beast isn't just gonna show up tomorrow, cause half the world disappeared and all these planes and trains and cars were wrecked. And then all of a sudden, oh, oh, six, six, six on my forehead, oh, my God, I think. Really? Satan is a deceiver. He would love for us to believe, oh, one day, one day, one day, it's today. It's today. It's today. The beast system of Babylon is already being built. The beast system of religion is already being built. The beast system of the mark, the name and the number of the Antichrist, it's already here. It's time that we wake up and we go, you know what? I'm not bowing to that any longer. And I'm gonna live for the Lord. Tomorrow night, in our next session, we're gonna jump into chapter nineteen and chapter nineteen is the ultimate destruction. Of the uh city of Babylon and um. It, I mean, the city's already been, but we go to heaven and we see a party is being thrown in heaven because Babylon is destroyed. And then the next scene we see is Jesus coming out of heaven and destroying the Antichrist and the false prophet. We're gonna see that those two men. And that city, that system are destroyed. Then we're gonna get into what's called the millennium, the thousand-year reign of Christ. At the end of that thousand reign year, Satan will be released. And then Satan will be thrown into the pit. So we're gonna see the destruction of Babylon, the city. The destruction of the Antichrist world dictator. The destruction of the false prophet, the harlot, the prostitute. And we're gonna see the destruction of that system. And the salvation and the rescue of God's people. I wanna say this and I'll close tonight. I don't know when the rapture's coming. I do not want you and I to be lulled asleep. I don't know if the rapture's coming before the tribulation. I don't know if it's coming in the middle. I don't know if it's coming at the end. But I'm not going to go, oh, well, so-and-so said, so I'm gonna believe that. I'm gonna read and I'm gonna study and I'm gonna allow the spirit of God to prepare me. Prepare me. So that I won't bow today. Your rapture is coming. There's a rapture coming for your life. You may, your rapture may come at the age of of, you know, ninety-eight. Or a hundred and eight, but there's a date. That your body has an expiration on. There's an expiration date on your body. And that's your personal rapture. There's the rapture of the world. The question is, are you ready? Are you ready? So God bless us, prepare us as we go into the rest of this week, the rest of this study. And God, would you reveal yourself to us? And God, thank you that that you are going to dis- and you are destroying the work of the enemy. So God, help us to wake up and to to get out of that system today in the mighty name of Jesus and everybody said. Thank you so much for joining us. We'll see you again tomorrow, six thirty. We'll be in chapter nineteen and twenty. Uh, and then let me just prep you, chapters twenty-one and twenty-two are my favorite uh in the whole Bible. We'll spend two to three days talking about heaven and what heaven's gonna look like. Um, so as we leave earth, one day, we're gonna go to a city, we're going to a tangible place. Where God will rule and reign. Thank you, God bless you. I'll see you again tomorrow night at six thirty.